Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members, have you read minutes from the October meeting?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Different Jackie?
Motion.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone here representing Flintlock Storage?
Good evening, Jamie Lojoudis from Inside Engineering, Surveying and Landscape Architecture. How is everyone tonight? Speaking up?
Yes, good hearing.
Sorry. Ever can hear me better?
Got you.
So we've provided some additional comments and responses to the consultant comments that we've received from the last planning board meeting. I think with the exception of a couple different minor comments, we've addressed the majority of them. We do have some concerns that we wanted to bring to your attention. We've been going through the driveway right-of-way easement, language, and arrangement with the neighbor. It has been a difficult road at best. They are... They basically have ceased to negotiate with us on that premise. We do have the applicant's attorney with us to speak more to that if you guys would prefer an attorney language. But basically the gist is they feel they have an easement and they don't want to change it. They don't want to revise the language. They have an agreement with the applicant to allow for the site improvements within that right-of-way and don't want to have any other instrument recorded with the county. So at this point, I don't know what else we can do. So that's one concern. We have reached out and submitted to the Department of Health for the confirmation that the septic tank, holding tank, is acceptable. We have not heard back from them yet. They were reviewing it this week. And then the other item was the DOT concern with the culvert. We have also reached out to them and have not received comments back.
Thank you. Members, any questions?
So what is your, what is the next step?
Step for the easement.
Yeah, what is, because right now, from what we've heard, it almost seems like the applicant needs to kind of wrap up these things and just kind of pause the project on this side so we don't keep burning your money. And, you know, just so you can wrap up these loose ends and then kind of come request to us once you get these loose ends, you know, kind of going, you know, from the legal standpoint, and then come back to us and then we'll just get the public hearing going once it's gone. I mean...
I think the problem we're running into right now is that the neighbor's not budging on the easement. He's not going to provide it.
But we're never going to be able to close the public hearing.
But why?
With having the undue potential issues with the easements and everything else, because they're loose ends.
Essentially, there is an easement for the ingress and egress to be able to do that. So they have that ability.
The site improvements have been signed off on by the property owner and are, they're fine with it. But then they've provided a letter stating that they are accepting of those site improvements.
And that's the neighbor or the owner of the property?
The owner of the property.
Okay.
So at this point, it's, we, there's nothing else that we can do to persuade him to change his mind to grant another, a separate easement or an additional easement or an amendment to the current easement to file with the county to satisfy the comment that's been provided to us.
But as soon as that changes and then you're going forward with that application and you're saying you're going to use this driveway for ingress and egress, the problem with that is you're leaving yourself open to liability.
Understood.
Okay.
I think that is something that the applicant will have to...
And then, and then there was a problem with it. Yeah, the last problem is the, you know, we're working on the sidewalk easement. That's going to be a pretty straightforward easement. But there might be another easement required when you have to deal with the stormwater pipe with the DOT. We just don't know what the DOT is going to require.
True.
Yep. So it's a lot of risk. So if we change things, then we might have to reopen the public hearing.
Or you could adjourn it to the following meeting. Or you could adjourn it to the following meeting.
Oh, we could keep adjourning it, but then they're burning money. Then they keep burning the...
No, absolutely. Totally understand that. We just want to start the process so that we can continue the project.
You know, we can circulate for...
We haven't even started Seeker.
Yeah, we circulate for lead agency. We could, if you want to move forward with that, we can. It just, I, you know...
We definitely don't suggest opening the public hearing until at least one of the three items are taken care of because they're just going to wind up wasting their money.
Yeah.
Potentially if, I mean, we don't even know if we can move forward with the project until we get one of those three things. Like, those are three very important things.
Understood.
You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, my suggestion would be just to hold off on the public hearing. I mean...
And try to freeze the escrow so we stop the review so you don't constantly get bills for escrow every, all the time that they keep reviewing it and going forward. So it stops the review of the application and just kind of pauses it.
What happens if they don't approve? Like, if this neighbor doesn't want to move forward with the easement?
That's a question between the lawyers at that point because they will actually start litigating against each other potentially.
I'm going to let him speak to that.
Yeah, no, that's, it's outside of our lane. We're just making recommendations to, you know, try to save the applicant money.
My name is Craig Baumgartner. I represent the applicant. I can provide some history on the easement and let the board know where we're at to date. So there is, there was an easement prior to the subdivision of these two lots on file. Okay, so there is a recorded easement in place before our lot and the neighbor's lot that the access crosses was subdivided. All right? That easement was confirmed when the subdivision process took place. All right? So when the applicant commenced this project, I had some discussion with the planning board's attorney. The question that was raised or we were hoping at that point in time to kind of put to rest is, we know we have the right to cross these premises, but the question is, do we have the right to improve them? And at the time, the applicant spoke to the next-door neighbor and it seemed like this was not going to be any problem whatsoever. So rather than really push this issue with the board, with the planning board's attorney, we basically said, okay, let's just go see if we can get what we need here. So we prepared a draft easement and I shouldn't even, I don't even know if an easement is the right way to term it.
More of a maintenance agreement?
Because we have, yeah, we have an easement in place. This was more of a document that would supplement the existing easement. Okay? And we put some language in there as to, we were saying, okay, the applicant is going to do the initial improvement. The applicant is going to maintain it until the neighboring property is developed in some sense. Like, we were saying, we're going to take care of all of the, we'll bear all the responsibility with the installation and the maintenance until that takes place. Truthfully, we thought that was...
Fair.
And helpful, okay? Because now we're saying to the next-door neighbor, we're going to build this for you. We're going to maintain this for you. Now, when you're ready to develop your lot, you've got this nice access road coming in. There seemed to be some pushback on that. And so we prepared another draft, stripped down some of the language that he was concerned with, had submitted that to him. We were hopeful that he was going to be here tonight because initially he said he would be. So I think, you know, right now, number one, I have to circle back to your planning board attorney, speak to him and say, hey, listen, you know, because our position at the outset, even before we talked to neighbor, is the easement that is in place gives us the right to improve and maintain. Okay? This was more of a path, you know, path of least resistance. It's turned into a path with resistance. So, you know, we're going to be talking to the planning board's council. We'll also continue to talk to the neighbor to see if we can get him on board because I think it's better for everybody involved to have that well-defined, you know, who's responsible for installation, who's responsible for maintenance. If anything, you know, I think it's certainly a benefit to that neighboring property owner as well.
And snow removals in there and everything else?
Everything. We basically said, we'll take it all until you develop and then at that point in time, things would be split.
Yeah.
That's what we had proposed, you know...
Even if you took that off the table, would they go with that? Are you saying that you'll just take care of your area? And that didn't work either?
The neighboring property owner seems to question this board's authority to make this roadway be improved. And I spoke to him, we had a conference call with him, and I said, I said, look, we're asking the town to allow us to construct this facility. The town has the ability to ensure that the people coming in and out of this facility are entering on a safe passageway. He...
We are not requiring, any more than the code requires. Yeah.
Oh, and again, this is, I clearly said to him, I said, he's saying, well, it's not even on your client's property. I said, yes, but we need this to enter into that property and certainly it's within the board's purview to take care of or make sure that that access is properly improved. My hope has been that I would get to speak to the neighbor's council because I think, you know, I would, it's tough when I'm saying, telling him what's best for him. I'm hoping that we can get somebody else involved who will, you know, maybe talk to him and say, this is the better way to handle it. But to date, we haven't been able to do that. We were hoping that tonight we would be able to do that.
If there's already an egress and an ingress on, like, so why does he have a site?
Because there's a maintenance aspect. So if there could be a civil lawsuit going back and forth between each other, it can get really nasty.
Yeah.
Yeah. And improvements also. So they're saying that they're going to try to improve it, which that language wasn't in there. They're just stating that they have to improve it. It's not in the easement.
Okay.
Understand, though, and this is, the argument is, and I think, and this has been even run by my title company, is that, you know, there's a common law right to do that. As the easement, you know, we're the benefited property.
Right.
So, you know, I don't believe we need this writing from the next-door neighbor. And, but we went down that path because when we initially contacted the next-door neighbor, you know, it was a positive interaction and we thought it was going to be okay. So I wouldn't say, we are definitely going to continue to work that angle and I think it is going to be probably the easiest way to get this resolved for the applicant is to try to, you know, work that out however, you know, so that he's comfortable and then it works for us as well. Okay? Any questions for me?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you can, come on up.
So...
Just please state your name and...
I'm Christine Vassie. I'm the property owner applicant. I do have a question. Is it absolutely necessary for this right-of-way to be paved for us to move forward? Because there was a business there before. The, I know that there was an ice cream shop there for years. There was ingress, egress, people in and out. Without this being paved, so is it absolutely necessary for the roadway to be paved in order for us to move forward? And is it absolutely necessary, since we do have an agreement from the property owner that grants us the easement, that we can improve it? Is it absolutely necessary that we do have to have an amendment to the existing easement to clarify the right to improve? Which it's understood that we do. We believe that we do have that right. And he signed off on it, saying we absolutely can do any improvements necessary. So my main questions are, A, is it absolutely necessary that the driveway does need to be paved? And B, if it does, do we really need to have this revision made to the existing easement?
John?
Well, first thing is, the code requires, the code requires a blacktop. And we're just trying to protect you. This is all about protecting you, more than it is about the town.
Right, right. Right, he did say he would privately with us pave it. He would pave it privately, so...
He would, the neighbor.
My name is John Andrews. I'm the engineer to the planning board. And I'm going to answer her question in part because of the bulk of what she's asking are legal matters and I am not an attorney. She's represented by council. You are represented by council. So I will leave those opinions to council. The simple question is before you, they have an application in front of you for site plan approval for development of a property. Access to that property is over an easement. It is, however you want to describe it, it is an unimproved easement. According to your rules and regulations, access for this site plan needs to be over an improved easement, which we have taken to mean asphalt and the proper width. And so in our position, the asphalt is necessary. Legally speaking, I'm going to respectfully disagree that the right of ingress and egress conveys with it automatically the rights of improvement and maintenance. But again, I am not counsel and I'm not going to go any further than to say, my recommendation would be, and this gentleman is correct, he needs to have another discussion with Jeff Battistoni. And I keep hearing things and, from my position as your engineer, agreements, easements, they all have different meanings. And what we got was a letter which said, yeah, you can improve it, you can maintain it. And that's all, I think, we've seen. I don't think we've seen some of these other instruments. Maybe Jeff has, I do not know. But, you know, what happens if he sells, the neighbor sells the property and the other neighbor said, well, wait a minute, why is this? I, you know, there's, so there's a whole bunch of issues spinning within issues. The one that's in my purview, yes, it needs to be paved.
Okay. Does that help? Because like I said, we really can't...
Yeah, I agree. I'm just trying to figure out how...
Right, how to get around it.
...be able to move forward without...
Well, if you're talking, you got to come to the mic. Sorry.
I believe that the driveway is going, the right-of-way is going to be paved either way because he agreed to do it with, so...
And it's going to help your business anyway.
It's going to, yeah. And it's just really this kind of hang-up about the paperwork that he's giving us a hard time on. So I'm just figuring out, how can we get around that and still move forward? Because I don't think we're going to get the cooperation from him any other way.
And then you have, then there's a couple other things that could hunt, that would hang up the planning board, keep adjourning the meet, you know, keep adjourning it, is the board of health with the tank.
Yes.
If they all of a sudden say, you got to put in a septic system, that changes everything on the site plan. Basically, it's got to come, be re-presented and re-reviewed and it starts the whole process over again. And then you're going to again, have a meeting that you have an open public hearing that keeps getting adjourned and adjourned and adjourned and time just keeps burning and money.
Right.
You know, so I mean, there's a lot of open ends here. It's just a lot of risk.
So if I were to summarize the discussion we had last week at the workshop, I think what we said is that there are a lot, these three open issues in total make us uncomfortable with going to a public hearing because having a conditional approval with three significant open issues is tricky. Right? And that's what we were saying a little earlier is if we could get it to two...
Right.
So I don't know which one, which of these gophers you can kind of bop on the head most likely, but that's kind of what we're looking for. Is that team affair summary of the discussion we had?
Very much so.
And yeah, and I'm only up here speaking to the easement part of it. The other ones, I'm going to defer to you, so that's fine.
One more thing, one more thing. Since he's already started kind of just, I would suggest you really let the lawyers do their jobs.
Okay.
Because he, don't think you're going to get a handshake agreement from him. He's already starting like a lot of nonsense and you already, you guys already agreed to something and he already changed his mind.
Yeah.
So keep that in mind now for future reference. No, I got to go through attorneys.
Be very specific.
I have to have everything written out, signed. No, 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 sir, you need to sign this. And that's to protect you more than anybody else. Not so much the town, it's you.
Right, I understand.
Because then he could just screw everything up and it's going to cost you more money. That's not the point of us being here. We're trying to expedite it.
Yeah, we want to save, we want to save you money, get you guys to start your business, move on your way, get away from us as fast as possible.
We want a lot of businesses in this town.
Right, now I understand and I appreciate that.
So now let's say she, let's say they decide, let's put a pin in it.
Yep.
For like, now, is that timed? So do they have to come back, let's say, in three months? Sixty days, like, is there a timeframe on that?
No, 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 they have just have a pending application.
Yeah.
It's just a pending, we have pending applications that last for years.
Yeah.
So then I would really look to suggest to do that. I would just put a pin in it until you guys can get... And, you know, just, do they have to let Vera know?
Yeah, they have to let Vera know.
So that they put a hold on your escrow so that nothing else gets...
And it goes to bottom line and...
And yeah. And then whenever you get something back, even like she said, even if you get one document back from either DOT or the Health Department or whatever...
And you can keep submitting documents and they just can't be reviewed.
Exactly.
You can keep submitting to us and they're just going to keep piling up.
And whenever you're ready, you just let Vera know to reopen it.
Can we at least circulate for Seeker?
If you want, if you want to, I mean, that's, that's...
Thank you.
Okay, no, it's, like I said, we have no problem going forward with that stuff.
What we had discussed, and I think we've reached a point that I think Bruce, myself, and Liz, even though she is absent this evening, have... The recommendation was that you could circulate for lead agency. You could also make your referral to the county to move this ahead. And again, we deferred the public hearing to you folks and we very clearly understand what you're saying because we have the same three concerns. You know, if one of these goes south, it can have a major impact on what it is you're looking at.
Oh, yeah.
And I am fully content to let attorneys do what they do.
Oh, yes.
I do have concerns with DOT because they're kind of a bit of a wild card. I'm less concerned about the Health Department. But, you know, they're, they still have to, you know, even though the Health Department accepts it, the building inspector is the final say. So once he sees all the paperwork from the Health Department and understands the terms, he's got to accept it as well. So, you know, there's a couple pieces here. But to Jamie's point, you can and we would recommend that you adopt a resolution to circulate for lead agency and that you further adopt a resolution to circulate to the county for their review and comment.
Okay.
And that you would obligate the engineer for the applicant to provide Vera with whatever she needs for that circulation process.
Okay.
What does that mean?
They wanted to circulate for lead agency so they basically wanted to tell every, all the agencies that we are the lead agency. So if they have any comments, they come to us.
Good evening, I'm Bruce Parva, the Town's Environmental Consultant. The board will recall when this project first started before us, one of the major aspects to deal with was the fact that there was a prior undiscovered wetland in the middle of the property. And I come before you to tell you that that has been substantially resolved. Jamie and the rest of the applicants have worked very hard to come up with a mitigation plan. It's been refined and refined again to the point where I think it's a satisfaction mitigation. This is a very rare instance where the board is looking at doing something in a wetland, a wetland buffer. But recall that this has been, as indicated earlier, a site that has been heavily used in the past, highly managed in the past. And this is an instance where we're actually perhaps doing something of improving the existing condition with development. And so there are few odds and ends left to do on the environment of it. I'm going to reserve judgment finally because the septic system may require site plan changes as might this DOT pipe, as we've been discussing. But to date, the wetland issues and the majority of the environmental issues have been resolved. Any questions?
Yeah, because they're, you're implementing rain gardens, basins, you know...
So they're doing a stormwater management basin that is going to be in a wetland area that will actually increase the hydrology to that wetland, improve the wetland function with intense plantings. The applicant actually did a pre and post-construction pollutant loading for phosphorus going into the receiving waters. They're reducing that pollutant loading from pre-construction levels. They're putting rather robust planting together in the wetland buffer, removing invasive species, and have developed a management plan over a three-year period to ensure that the plants that are installed as mitigation will be surviving and they're putting together a bond estimate for that as well. All the major food groups. Okay?
Great, thank you.
And that also includes, is there a basin at the bottom of that? A catch basin that they have to clean?
The actual stormwater management is done, the roof drains come from a series of pipes discharged into the stormwater basin and the rest of it is through a sheet flow system designed to accumulate the water into the stormwater.
Okay, so they're just going to, okay. You're using a pervy surface to go in.
Yeah, yeah. One thing also, we spoke with the applicant consultants. They're putting in a small storage area to the back of the property. The runoff from that is going to be treated also by a separate stormwater system to block runoff from getting into the wetland, some wetland buffer.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Do you have anything else to ask us? Or just kind of vote?
The only thing else I can add is that I know the Health Department is pending, that review is pending. We do have a verbal okay on the septic tank from him. It's literally just getting the paperwork from them. So in my mind, that's addressed. But I know you guys need the official letter, so...
Unfortunately.
Yes.
And hopefully it doesn't take them months.
Hopefully not.
So...
I'm hoping this week. It's already on Thursday, so we'll see how that works.
No, that's it, circulate for lead agency, that's it? That's all the requirements?
Just one last technical item. If the board, at the board's pleasure, I will reach out to Mr. Battistoni. I'll send him an email and copy the board on it and suggest that he have a discussion with their attorney and, you know, formalize a position so that we know what we're going to do going forward so that it gives them some latitude and wiggle room to know what they need to do... room to know what they need to do.
What they need to request.
To close this up.
Yeah.
All right?
John, remind me what the second motion?
It was, it was circulate lead agency and...
Circulate for lead agency, and also circulate to the county for their review and comment, please.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll give you, I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything else that we can do to help them get a response from DOT or DOH?
Not really.
No, not without stepping outside of our purview, we would be...
And not without walking up the works.
Yeah, we could really cause legal issues for the town if we interjected into some, an application, and tried to get them to...
Wow? I didn't know that.
Yeah, it becomes a...
Thank you.
Well, because you're, you're downtown official.
Thank you.
You know, I'm important.
Is there anyone here from INE property?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this one is...
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, you should have received late this afternoon an email from the applicant withdrawing their application from consideration. To your credit, this is one of the few that has listened right out of the box to the initial ask. And as a consequence, they went back to their shop, they took a second look at really what was necessary and what they wanted to achieve, they were able to reduce the amount of disturbance and confirm it under 5,000 square feet, they were further able to provide us with pretty substantial documentation of actually what the excavation was going to be, and it's well under the 100 cubic yards. They've been in conversation with Mr. Walters, and on those two factors, they no longer need an erosion and sediment control permit. So, congratulations. Somebody listen.
Hey, somebody listen.
Hey, we saved the applicant a lot of money.
Yeah, exactly.
News here for Renieri. Both of you at the same time.
Before the illustrious Mr. Correll comes up, Vera kindly reminded me that you need to make a motion to return the fees for that, the INE application.
Yep, well, once you, once you guys complete escrow billing.
Yeah, you wouldn't be returning escrow, you'd be returning the fees only, I believe.
Very good.
So, are we making that motion? Is that what you want us to do?
Well, we can make the motion.
Motion to return the fees?
Motion to return the application fees, and then motion to return, well, we can't return escrow until the, until the billing's done. So, but can we make that motion at this point, that we can return the escrow, even though we don't know the amount?
Well, just that we return both of them after the whole process.
Okay, we'll wait till next month. All right, we wait till next month?
No, I got it, do it now.
Now we'll get it done, that way they can get their money back as fast as possible.
We say remaining escrow.
Okay, yep, so...
Can I get a motion to return the remaining escrow?
I'll make motion.
And the application fee.
And the application fee.
I'll make motion.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, we want to give money back.
And now, your honor.
(laughing).
Good evening, my name is Bob Bradley, I'm representing Jerry Renieri along with Jack Correll. We had a discussion at the workshop meeting last week about scheduling this for a public hearing, we would like to make a formal request that we schedule this for a public hearing. As you're aware, it's one house on about 11 acres.
Yep.
Members, can I get a motion to schedule this? Is there a date?
Well, just next month.
Next month for a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on?
Yes, it's a new memo.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you got this before.
There was something that came in today.
Basically, this application has progressed, the applicant's engineer has done a lot of work with respect to the wetland mitigation. If you recall at the last meeting, we were discussing that historically, some of the wetland area had been filled, and we're looking at a way to mitigate that. There is now a design of a new wetland system that's taking runoff predominantly from the driveway surface, discharging that into a wetland creation area, which will then flow into the existing wetland system, mitigating for the loss of wetlands underneath the fill, rather than digging up the fill, which has some contaminants in it, and would probably do more harm than good, for basically creating a new wetland system adjoining the existing wetland system. Also, the applicants indicated they're going to be encapsulating the contaminated fill on their property by either paving over it or putting 12 inches of fill, which is what would the directive have been from the DEC to mitigate for the contaminated fill. My memo just looks for a couple of minor details and odds and ends relative to the environmental issues. Jack, you get a couple of this? There you go, you got to copy now. And I do recommend, if the board feels it's appropriate, to schedule the public hearing for the meeting in December. Any questions?
Great.
Well, we did it.
You already did it.
Yeah, we just did it.
Yeah, we just did.
And as we discussed at the workshop, they have advanced a lot of the elements of this, there's a lot of i's that have to be dotted and t's crossed, and Jack, Mr. Correll, did put together a lot to do with the town road improvements, but his driveway improvements were kind of lagging behind that, so we still need some technical engineering work. But I would, what I would respectfully request is that we, again, be authorized to sit down directly with Mr. Correll and work through this, because to try to commit some of these things to paper is, it's not in his interest and my interest either, but I think with putting our two heads together, we can eliminate some of the retaining walls into town right away, we can do some, make some adjustments to grading and grades that would minimize the work, make encapsulation a little easier. So, on that basis, thank you for scheduling the public hearing, but I would kindly ask that you authorize myself and Mr. Barber, as may be appropriate, to meet with Mr. Correll and work our way through this, so we can kind of put this at its, out of our misery, so to speak.
Yep.
Does anyone have problems with authorization?
Nope.
No.
Can I get a motion to grant...
Authorization for engineering and environmental consultant support, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, load the line. Who's working?
She done added Costello.
You missed, you missed the charm of Liz.
I'm sorry.
Who's Jerry and who's Dean?
Anunziata, Smalley Corners, you moved that to administrative review, we're in the process of working with Mr. Correll to, again, dot i's and cross t's. White Vernon?
If I may just, the, Anunziata, just to let the board know that the individual who spoke at the meeting last month did indeed speak with us via Zoom at the consultants' meeting, we attempted to answer all of her questions that she posed to us, I'm not sure where she's going with this at this particular time, but she didn't be with us, and we did answer the questions as best we can.
White Vernon, that again, you moved to administrative review, we are working actively, Mr. Correll's been bombarding me with emails in the last three to four days to try to get this resolved, we're working with Vera to resolve some of the bonding issues, you did approve a bond amount, for whatever reason, it fell through the cracks and hasn't been sent to the town board yet, but we're going to remedy that as quickly as we can.
Steve, on that, your concerns with respect to the wetland access and how they're putting that poles in, is going to be addressed in terms of conditions of wetland permit, so that they're going to be basically going in, eliminating disturbance, and using a trapfire type of machine, and any disturbance is going to be restored and replanted in the wetland season. So, that's good. Okay?
Yeah, because we're not going to be able to control them 100%, but we can make them restore it.
Yep, so we're working on that. Holly Property, I think that one's resolved, I think Liz is following up, it's just a question of attaching the approved plans to the final stipulation, and getting, making sure that gets properly filed, I think Liz is on top of that one. Real Buto Property, you may remember the discussion at the, at the meeting, Mr. Walters was involved, the applicant kind of got ahead of himself and didn't, didn't build according to permit, with Mr. Correll's assistance, he somewhat roped the site back in, but I think, I think it was Mr. Wilhelm that pointed out, he also brought in some additional fill. Very late this afternoon, we received an email from Mr. Correll explaining the origin of that fill, and proposing a testing scheme. Unfortunately, we haven't really had a chance to get into it, but I would respectfully request that you put that on automatically for the first meeting in, in December, because there are a couple flaws with what Mr. Correll has submitted to us, both Bruce and I will, will get him some additional information as to what we're seeking, but we'd like to, what we need to do, as you may recall, is sample what was brought in to make sure it's clean. Jack has proposed a sampling methodology, it's good as far as it goes, but it needs to go a little farther, we need some additional information, so that's what the discussion would be in December, and hopefully, we'll have everything in place in a more timely fashion, rather than 4:01 this afternoon.
And the sampling plan obviously should be reviewed by this board to ensure you're comfortable with the workflow.
Well, as long as they're doing the same sampling plans before, or something similar, that's all that matters.
Well, it's basically a little bit different in the sense that this is fill on top of the fill, Steve, so you better be real specific in terms of the grid pattern that you're going to be looking at, as well as the depth of sampling and how we're going to sample. Jack indicated he's going to be looking for VOCs, where we're, probably the board will want to look at unrestricted residential thresholds for that panel that we always have done in the past.
Yep, and it did trigger before we hit Mercury, so...
Yeah, yeah, we'll get those memos together, and you'll have a look at it in December.
Jack wants to say something.
Come up, Jack.
It's your application.
Just want to get this simple note before...
It freezes.
What they committed it for today. I know, we only had a meeting last week.
Well, the fact is that we...
Speak closer to the microphone, otherwise you'll get it.
We can't prevent it from the board, as to...
I understand that, but maybe the board can, you guys could make a recommendation to the board. It's just, it's the DEC...
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is, I sent you the DEC.
It's the same VSC standard, and it's need to be...
No, no, it's, it's the VSC.
Jack, this is not a good, we need this right now, it really isn't, we haven't got it before today, we haven't a chance to review.
Stop fighting, boys.
I'm going to suggest, it's up to the pleasure of the board, I mean, theoretically, you folks are driving the bus and need to review and approve this, if you want to move that to us administratively to assist the applicant in getting it done before things freeze, and copying you on that before, we defer to you, it's your call.
As long as Bruce is, as Bruce is happy with it, and he's comfortable with the plan, I couldn't see any issue from my standpoint.
I think it's a good idea to have it done before it freezes, obviously.
Correct, and that's why I...
And the fact of the matter is, our tradition, the board has had a purview of approving any of these plans pursuant to the consultant's recommendations. I'm a little concerned about saying precedent here, and it would have to be some really extraordinary circumstances, I'll tell you what, I'll look at it, with John, it looks like it's in the ballpark reasonable, if the board agrees, we can have them get on their way and start it, if not, we can just agree before.
And the reason why I'm making that recommendation is because that they've already done sampling on this site for the fill that was brought in before, and that's the only reason to the recommendation, that, you know, you guys had, had a filter, had a sampling plan, you've already executed sampling multiple times, and that something similar could be executed without, with minor adjustment, and, you know, depth and everything else that's got to go on, that's, you know, those are just, you know, dotting the i's, that makes you comfortable, we'll be, we're okay with it.
So, if we find that it's reasonable, what happens, then we'll suggest that they start as soon as possible pursuant to the memos, if not, then it's my recommendation that we send this back to you for review and discussion.
Yeah.
And we can review it with you the first meeting in December anyway, and if there is a deficiency, or something is out of the ordinary, we'll know, and we can go from there. But we'll try to, we'll try to advance it as fast as we can.
Sounds good.
Realizing when it came in, in a short time.
No, we understand, we just don't want the applicant to, you know, because it's, he's got a finite construction window, and, you know, we'd like to see, we'd like to see, the neighbors would like to see the house built, you know, something built there, so...
It's very difficult to value something when you get it before clock and you have it outside.
We got it, no, no, we, no, we fully understand the rush and the need to rush this, just because they're working underneath a stop work order, they, they had them at the site, the site is now underneath a stop, stop work order fully, so we're just trying to resolve that so they can get back to construction. And that's the only reason that I'm making the recommendation to move forward underneath your, you know, expertise.
Okay.
But that's up to, that's up to everybody to make a motion and decide, I'm only one opinion.
Make a motion.
You're the one who makes the motion.
For what, for admin?
No, I'll make, I'll make the motion to allow Bruce to, to set up the testing protocol for the, the sampling of the soil.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good.
Okay, thank you. DEP Seven Hills, we're waiting on them, Vera, we haven't gotten anything back. Kent Manor, far as I know, that's in the hands of the New York State DEC for consideration of a five-acre waiver, they have not made any, I haven't seen any paperwork, nor have they made any determination, so the town has no role at this point in time.
Okay.
Route 52 Development, I think that's, remains in limbo, Liz has not advised us of any new correspondence or new contact from them, so that's out there. Frill and Pure, we actually received notification today that they are bringing back a revised proposal, so you may in fact have that in front of you for your December meeting.
Okay.
And then lastly, Town of Kent Mining Law, that's up to you folks, I think Mr. Ruth was looking for comment.
We're waiting for a combined meeting with the town board.
Okay.
They have to set it up.
Okay, that takes care of it, folks.
Thank you.
That's it.
You have anything else to tell us, gentlemen?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Enjoy the holidays, yeah.
Members, do you have any questions for these gentlemen?
No.
Vera, do you have anything to tell us?
No.
Bill, do you have anything to tell us?
Absolutely.